Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted for public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 1046 at sequenza, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packin and the Trenton Times on January 6, 2024. It was also distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves rights to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 168 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this in-person meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is being livestreamed. The representative descending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18838.1. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. In event the statutes amend, the law should take precedence over this bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Betsy Baglio?
Here.
Beth Baron?
Here.
Adam Bierman?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Mara Franceschi?
Yeah.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I get a motion for adoption of the minutes of November 19, 2024? Brian, second, Debbie.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Welcome, everyone, to this last meeting of 2024. It's a bittersweet meeting tonight. We are saying our goodbyes to three board members with 18 years of experience. We have an agenda review before the meeting, and Mr. Bolden was like, we used to call them departing board members. And he didn't like that because kind of like departing, like dearly departed. So we went back and forth and back and forth, and he came up with exiting. But today, as I was thinking about it, I was thinking we should say escaping. So, Betsy, Brian, Rob, of course, we have to make a little to do. And so we're going to start. Susan is going to start.
I'm going to read a resolution on our agenda celebrating Rob. So, whereas Rob Christopher is leaving the Princeton Board of Education after fulfilling three years of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Rob Christopher has made to our district and its students and thank him for his time and effort, noting that while Cranberry reps do not participate in official committees, Rob was an active and engaged member of the Board, advocating for Cranberry with good insight, both thoughtful and helpful, and has been an integral part of the current superintendent search. He served on the committee to select the superintendent search firm. And I personally would like to thank Rob. We've been seatmates a lot throughout his time here, and having his perspective not only from Cranberry, but him having three kids who have attended our high school has given him also added insight, and it's really been a pleasure, and the Cranberry Council is lucky to have you joining them.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Beth is going to... Yeah. I mean, I was trying to get this meeting done by...
No, this is going to take some time. No, Rob, we really appreciate your... You have really taken this on wholeheartedly, and we appreciate your insight. As Susan said, you represent Cranberry, but you really represent all of us and do that very well. So we're really appreciative of your service and glad we got to serve with you.
And I'll say that you've been a model board member. You've been a voice of reason. You have a great sense of humor. We'll miss you very much, but not the complaining about driving over here.
I should leave the board all the time. This is great.
That's true.
Rob, I want to thank you for always allowing me to kid with you about being the Cranberry rep. I'm so glad you have been our Cranberry rep. But again, really, your insight, your directness, you always like bring us back, you know? You bring us back to what we need to do. I really wish you the best of luck on the Cranberry Council, and FYI, you are my favorite Cranberry rep.
Wow, shots fired.
Rob, I also want to say I valued our partnership while I've served as acting in interim, especially because we share that Cranberry connection. One of Rob's superpowers, for those of you that don't know, is his ability to listen to all sides and ask thoughtful questions in order to consider multiple perspectives. He possesses a faithful and steady presence, as well as a delightfully dry sense of humor that he uses to bring us back together. He's a true advocate for students in teaching and learning at PHS, and now we wish him more rest and the best as he serves Cranberry Town Council.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. I get to read the resolution for Brian. Whereas Brian McDonald is leaving the Princeton Board of Education after fulfilling six years of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Brian McDonald has made to our district and its students and thank him for his time and effort, especially for his work in the following areas. The number of years are stated after each. Chair or co-chair of the Facilities Committee, one year. Finance Committee, one year. Operations Committee, four years. Long-term planning committee, two years. That's the chairs. And he was member of the Personnel Committee for three years, Policy Committee for one, Equity Committee for three, Finance Committee for one, Facilities Committee for one, Negotiations Committee for one, and Long-term Planning Committee for one. I'd say two there on the last one.
Okay.
So that's the resolution. And then I'd just like to say, initiate the tributes by saying that I'm really grateful for Brian's six years of dedicated service to the community and our children. As a leader on the Board, Brian brought strong finance, operational, and governance experience and deep community connections, in particular with partners like Sustainable Princeton and Princeton University. His calm and steady presence at the Board table has helped with fiscal prudence and student-centered work. With zero-based budgeting, maintaining AAA credit ratings, successfully passing and implementing three important referendums that provide students with safe, well-maintained, and welcoming schools, Brian helped secure a generous five-year financial commitment from Princeton University that supports innovative and equitable programs and supports. Most of all, he has been an extraordinary colleague, always ready to listen patiently, offer a thoughtful perspective and positive encouragement, making us a more strategic and effective in the work that we do for children. So thank you, Brian, for your partnership on the journey these past six years. We will miss you and look forward to future partnership on behalf of our community. Thanks, Brian.
So we also have parting gifts, which I'll bring right over, but I just wanted to say, Brian, it's been a privilege to get to know you. You're a deep thinker with a great sense of humor, and while you're known for your financial acumen, your care and concern for students we educate is on par. And we look forward to partnering with you when you're across the street.
It has been my pleasure to serve with Brian on both operations and long-term planning for the last five years. Brian has been committed to supporting the district in its effort in long-term budget planning, sustainability, and facilities planning. We joke that Brian has a unique ability to summarize an issue in a lengthy and detailed manner, but at the same time can in quick order cut to the issue of any topic we are discussing. He always asks probing questions in order to better our work, and everything is guided by his love of Princeton and making its future as successful as possible. I look forward to seeing Brian's work on the Council. I look forward to continue our friendship, and my husband looks forward to a rematch and paddle.
And Brian, I'll jump in and say we got to know each other because we ran, I mean, against each other or, you know, we ran for these seats twice together. You are, as they've stated, a budget guy. You're a facilities guy, but you are a student guy, and I really appreciate the combination. And I do look forward to what's possible when you bring this mindset of the Board of Education to the Town Council. Thanks for serving.
And Brian, it's been a pleasure, and I'm grateful for your service. Brian is known for serving on the operational side of the House with his strong financial background and expertise. He also has really encouraged us to think and plan not just for short term, but long-term forecasts for our fiscal health. You've been an instrumental leader for past referendums, long-term planning, and the current referendum to ensure the safety and health of our students and making sure that our students have what they need to maximize their learning experiences. And even though you focused mostly on infrastructure, all your decisions are driven by your desire to figure out how to best serve our students. You are now going to be a good neighbor across the street, and we look forward to collaborating with you. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion for the tribute to the escaping board members? I forgot to do that. Mara, second, Eleanor? I know, but I didn't do the motion first. Wait, Betsy?
It's a consent, and we don't have to read the motion.
Wait, no, no. Betsy's leaving?
Let me skip her off.
So I get the... All right, everyone, sit back. She's been here a while. So I get to read the tribute to exiting board member Betsy Baglio. So whereas Betsy is leaving the Board of Education after fulfilling nine years of service, be it resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Betsy Baglio has made to our district and its students, thank her for her endless time and effort, especially for her work in the following areas. Board Vice President, three years, and she recently led the superintendent search, her second one, still underway. She's been chair or co-chair of the following committees. Equity, three times. Policy, twice. Student Achievement, seven years. Policy Committee, three years. And then she was on Student Achievement, two years, and didn't share it. Those were dark times. The Equity Committee, three years. Finance Committee, they were. Yeah. No, they really were. No, 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 no. I know you were on Finance, but I'm saying, when she was, it was dark times. Finance, the one year. She was never on Facilities. I just want to point that out. Somehow she escaped that. Oh, sorry, not escape. She did not. She did not get the...
The best committee.
She didn't have the joy. She was on the Steering Committee, the Negotiations Committee, the Ad Hoc Alt Revenue Committee, and she were, I don't even... Yeah, personal for eight years. Where is it? I don't know, but I...
It's the first thing on there. Personal Committee, eight years, right there.
Do you see it here? No, I think it's the way it was printed. It's fine. Anyway, so I just, I'll say, so I've had the privilege to serve... Ready? Good. I've had the privilege to serve on the Board with Betsy for eight years. We always say that one of the great things about Board service is you get to be friends with people that you would never otherwise meet, and I'll say, all three of the departing board members meet that, but especially Betsy. Betsy's the kind of person that never has a bad word to say about anyone. I unfortunately do not share that trait. And lately, I've broken my own rule as well. A former teacher, Betsy, shared her experience and expertise with us. Betsy doesn't love the spotlight. I was told there'd be tissues. No, no, no. No, I'm going to finish. I was told there'd be tissues and not the district, and not the district issue, Kleenex? That's what I was promised? Okay. Betsy doesn't love the spotlight. She's worked tirelessly to support the district and the functioning of the Board. It's been a gift to get to know her. And I'll miss her advice and counsel. She's been a true partner. That's all I can say. She's going to need more.
Okay. Betsy, where do I start? I've really enjoyed working with you these past eight years. A few quotes that remind me of you. Full disclosure, my son is in DLI. And I'm a former teacher, which is something that I really admire about you. Your lens of always looking at things through a teacher's eye has been very helpful to me in highlighting how our staff sees and experiences things and brings the classroom, you know, to life for me, making me a better board member overall. My sister once asked me if we should have more teachers as board members, and I told her, no.
They like to raise salaries when their teachers...
They would give away everything, everything. And as they sang to each other in Wicked, "Who can say if I've been changed for the better, but because I knew you, I've been changed for good." Thank you.
Can I give my Betsy quote? This has never happened before. Seven years of this has never happened before, so I don't know what I'll do in the future when new things happen. They keep happening. For me, Betsy embodies our district mission of joy and purpose and learning. It has been a privilege to work with Betsy, who always keeps children at the center of everything we do and who always sees the best in everyone and leads by example. I will miss her professionalism, her lightning intellect, her boundless kindness, her willingness to jump in and get things done, and her brilliant smile. I know she will continue to find ways to make an impact for students, and I hope she takes some time to rest for the next few months.
I'm going to take Daphne's lead. I kept mine short so I could get through it.
Thank you, I have.
I've had the pleasure to serve with Betsy for the last five years. All that have served with her, and she's served with a lot of board members, she was saying today, can speak to her intelligence and her ability to ask the important what-if question to frame issues in a whole new way. Her constant focus on student wellness and outcomes and the joy and laughter she brings to her work have been an inspiration. I am grateful to have gotten to work with Betsy, and I look forward to our continued friendship.
Do I get to... I have to say something, too. Betsy, with the heart and soul of a teacher, she always puts students first in every decision she makes. Her open and curious spirit establishes a safe place for all of us to think out loud and share ideas. Our bestie not only brings people together, but also brings out the best in each of us so we are better versions of ourselves. But she is a true tiger lily, so never underestimate Betsy's fierce and passionate commitment to make sure each and every student in PPS thrives and finds joy and purpose in learning. Betsy, we love you and are grateful.
I'm going to take a quick moment. Hang on. I was doing so well. Student achievement, I was not doing well, so I'm going to do well here. I just want to say, I have a whole thing written, but we're short on time. No, 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 it's fine. I just wanted to say, my Board service has been joyful and purposeful, and I appreciate that, you know, that is what we want for our students. That's our mission. And, hang on. Board of Education service is incredibly important to our public education system, which is one of the tenants of our democracy. Okay. I have lots of people, I have a lot of people to thank, and I'm going to send a lot of emails, but all of you around this table, I did count up early one morning that I've worked with 25 board members over nine years. Too many administrators to count. I appreciate what they've all brought, and I just want to take a moment. My family's here, as they were. Hang on, okay. So nine years ago, those big boys were really little, and they were, sorry, this is ridiculous. They were in first and fifth grade across the street at Community Park. They're now sophomores in high school and college. And I want to say to them, it hasn't always been easy to have your mom in this role. In some days, actually, it was really difficult, but I appreciate you knowing it was important to do, and I'm very proud of you. And to my husband, I thank you for the patience. You've had a lot of patience over all the years, so I'm grateful to all of you, and it's just been, it really has been a joy to do this job. Okay. Thank you all.
So I just want to say, part of the reason we do this celebration is this does take us away from our families. You want to have the right people running, overseeing the running of the school district. The three board members leaving tonight are three of those people. I want to say, there's cake over there and coffee, and so when the meeting's over, we invite everyone to come and have cake quickly. Can my kids get cake and then leave?
Can we chug hot coffee?
Yeah.
No choking.
Exactly. One more thing? All right. So we always laugh that, you know, you guys will have all this time Tuesday nights, blah, blah, blah. So I made you... Oh, wow! Yes. School board bingo. Amazing. I love this. I don't know what council needs to have. This is, you know, I just have to share, some of the words are redistricting Princeton University, school calendar, that's one of my very favorite. Board committee, this is really great. Thank you. The three of us have a plan in January. We're going to meet instead of being at a board meeting at some point. Enjoy. Thank you. All right. And up next is the superintendent search update. Oh, that's me. Sorry. The superintendent's, back to work, back to work. Superintendent search is ongoing. We are in the confidential phase, but we will continue to update the community. There will be a new person chairing that search in January and beyond, and the search continues. All right. Thank you. All right. And now moving on, we're sorry to keep you waiting, and we usually don't cry at meetings, so I just want to let you know. And if you watch some of our, if you watch some of our meetings, we're pretty unflappable, but anyway. So right now, we're going to invite up Alexis Custer, Shannon Barlow, Cecilia Burge, and our returning science supervisor, Jackie Katz came, so you have to come up, and they're going to give a presentation about the science of sourdough.
I'm Jackie Katz. If you don't know me, I taught in district for quite some time, and I was gone for a hot second, but I'm back in January as science supervisor, and I'm so excited to once again be part of the PPS science team, who you're going to hear from today. The words joy and purpose just kept coming up, and the work of Ms. Custer and Ms. Barlow just illuminate joy and purpose. So I will let them tell their sourdough story, but I want to thank everybody here for allowing me the opportunity to come back and work in such an incredible environment.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexis Custer, and over here is Shannon Barlow, and we actually have two students with us as well. We have Shira and Angela, who decided to come out to tonight's board meeting, and they actually brought their cookbook that they've made so they can actually show it off. And then we have a second cookbook as well that another student made. You guys can put that one around as well. So before you eat cake...
Which one's garlic?
Sure. You can walk around and show it. Before you guys eat cake, there's some sourdough bread for you to sample. There's plain cranberry and orange and garlic and everything. You got to come.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to eat cranberry. Yeah. I love you so much.
Rob, did you try the cranberry? I did not. All right. That was on the note.
I was like so... You're only allowed to have cranberries. All right, thank you. This is so wonderful. This is just... I know. I think it's so smooth.
My taste makes sourdough. I have carbs, too. We had the angels for the last minute because I heard you'd been missing them. Very fresh. She said it in voice, and I knew it was a guy. No, it was Brian.
I know. Yeah. All right. So this is sourdough science, so I teach biology, and I've had the amazing pleasure of coupling with Ms. Barlow this year. So our inspiration came from the fact that we both enjoy baking sourdough bread, and it was part of a PD that I had done with Dr. Joy Barnes-Johnson over the summer that was making learning visible. So I decided to couple my passion for science and creativity. I also teach forensic science, so there's a lot of creativity there, with sourdough bread bacon. And it is a science that you can do in your own kitchen. As I was going through and teaching myself this last spring, I kind of realized that there's so much interconnectedness that's just happening in your kitchen, the biotic and the abiotic, and you could just make it all come alive within your homes. So the phenomena that the kids explored, and these are all pictures from our classroom, is the, hold on. The wild yeast and the bacteria that are on the flour just comes alive in the sourdough starter jar as soon as you start adding water and you put it into a warm environment. So the students are able to visualize the microorganisms reproducing, metabolizing the nutrients, responding to the environment. They're creating for their starter. It's linking all the math skills, critical thinking, curiosity. Time management was a huge one that, you know, students learned throughout this whole process of coming back and forth and feeding it and taking care of it. And so, of course, we needed to link in our portrait of a graduate skill. So the three that stood out to us the most as we were going through and putting this project together was creative innovation. We're taking traditional biology and mixing it with the art of science and baking, quite literally, and then it's creating curious learners. They're asking really great questions. They have DIYOed their own experiments. They DIYOed their own bread yesterday and today, so there's photos to come on that. And then they have troubleshoot a lot. They've analyzed data, and they've been building arguments to make their own Sour Dough Journey So we talk a lot about yeast and the science community as being a model organism, so their bread pets were basically their own model organisms. They named them all sorts of things. So the girls had named theirs Crumblina. We had others named Yeezus, Bruce were a few of them. So their bread pets, they cared for them since September. They take care of them, they feed them. They now live in the refrigerator that was given to us by Ms. Burge, so it was really great. And the fermentation jars were provided through PEF funds, and they have been collecting data on their starters since September. So we've learned about ratios, we have measured pH, we've analyzed aroma, we brought in all different things to smell. Store-brought bread, fresh-baked bread, coffee beans, lemon juice, so we could go ahead and make a key to go with it. And I think we really have a hold of the metric system now because we're really using a ruler efficiently and balances on a daily basis. So this was the model that was created by our students a few years back. Ms. Katz and I went to a conference for a week long that was on model-based biology. So this is the model that has been used in our classroom, and we linked all the characteristics of life to the things that are happening inside the jar. They did this after reviewing both primary and secondary literature. And as we've kept it up, we keep linking it back to those characteristics of life, and it'll actually guide us through the rest of the school year. So right now, we're doing homeostasis, and we'll come back in January, and we'll do some experiments with that as well. They just finished response to stimuli. So here are some photos of the students working and a timeline of what we've done so far this school year. So we've collected data, aroma, pH, we started to create our own starter. Their starters needed to travel back and forth to their homes, which at times was challenging for the first two weeks, but all in all, we had a lot of success. We ran a test bake with all of their starters in October. We think it was on a previous slide. and balances on a daily basis. So this was the model that was created by our students a few years back. Ms. Katz and I went to a conference for a week long that was on model-based biology. So this is the model that has been used in our classroom. And we linked all the characteristics of life to the things that are happening inside the jar. They did this after reviewing both primary and secondary literature. And as we've kept it up, we keep linking it back to those characteristics of life. And it'll actually guide us through the rest of the school year. So right now, we're doing homeostasis, and we'll come back in January, and we'll do some experiments with that as well. They just finished response to stimuli. So here are some photos of the students working and a timeline of what we've done so far this school year. So we've collected data, aroma, pH, we started to create our own starter. Their starters needed to travel back and forth to their homes, which at times was challenging for the first two weeks. But all in all, we had a lot of success. We ran a test bake with all of their starters in October. We, I think it was on a previous slide, we saw different feeding types of food that the starter would like versus conventional use. We used all different types of cereal, and we put in a bag, crushed it up to see how much the bag would rise as it ate. And then in November, they designed their own experiments around response to stimuli. And now they've been making their own cookbooks that we'll add to for the rest of the school year. So this is just looking forward, what we plan on doing January, February. They'll design another experiment. We're going to link it to macromolecules. I have a cooking show idea kind of in mind. And then DNA will be able to make phylogenetic trees out of the different yeast that can be found in a starter. And then in between, the fun parts have been making crumpets right before Thanksgiving. We've also made waffles in October. And then, of course, they all got to bake yesterday and today, so. So I just wanted to give a special thanks to Dr. Barnes Johnson. She really worked with me on this idea over the course of the summer, and then encouraged me to link up with Ms. Barlow, who has been amazing in so many aspects to coordinate this. Dr. BJ also encouraged me to apply for the PEF grant and NSTA, which we got accepted to present that in Philadelphia in March. Ms. Burge, yes, the national one. Ms. Burge and Ms. Marata have continued to indulge this idea and help troubleshoot along the way. And then PEF granted us $1,300 to buy a lot of supplies. So there's a nice little storage area in the back now. Thank you so much to all of you for allowing us to present and indulging our creativity in the classrooms. Lillipis donated 100 pounds of flour. So did, King Arthur also donated flour. And then Pomptonian, which is our cafeteria staff, Tracy Hart, has been amazing to go ahead and work with and make the whole area accessible to us. Yep, and then there's one last slide. It's okay. So I added these slides today, so this was yesterday and today. I don't think we sat down yesterday from 8:00 in the morning. A lot of the students started in our room at 8:00 and then brought their dough home with them and shaped it after watching Instagram. Well, they think I should be on Instagram, but they were YouTube videos. But they were very excited for them. And then those are the loaves of bread we baked. And I don't think any loaves actually made at home. Most of the kids were walking around the high school eating them today. So. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your coming, and we always appreciate treats. And the bread was unbelievable. Oh, yes, yes. Please. Oh, thank you.
And while you're passing out bread, I just want to give kudos to Ms. Barlow and Ms. Custer and the whole team, because this is the innovative work that makes Princeton Princeton and bringing those authentic learning experiences in. So much, if you know anything about the next generation science standards, so much of that really deep work was represented in this phenomena that they're doing. And so it seems like it's just a really great way to kind of just open up innovation and have kids see something really cool. And I had the cranberry orange, and it was delicious. So kudos to the students and the staff for making that happen.
And I just wanted to say, those of us that indulged in sourdough bread making during the pandemic, I was one of those people. I also have lit my oven on fire. So it's not something that comes easy. And so I realize what's involved in getting a good sourdough bread, and it's very impressive. And it's a great skill for our kids to learn, and to understand the science behind it is really great. Thank you, and thank you for coming. All righty, we're moving on now to the superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. This is going to be a quick report, but we just want to highlight the link on our website to referendum information and details, just so you know, it's pretty easy to find. There are lots, lots of information, FAQs, and also opportunities to sign up for tours. And we have, we had a virtual forum, which is actually, has been, is also linked there. So if you were not able to attend on December 9th, you can click the link. And we have an in-person forum on January 11th at the middle school at 9:00 AM. So we just kind of want to highlight a couple things. So go ahead, Matt, and I'll. Do you want to just scroll down? And has the three questions?
The homepage. Projects. School logos. There's lots of data in these links for people that want to exhaustively look at each detail. So I'm not going to click through them all now. The plans. Lots of information here. Housing growth, lots. Sure, FAQ section. And if you don't see your question here, there's an email where you can ask that question.
We'll answer it too, right? Yes, we will.
We will. So each one of these questions has the answer. There's a lot of, it's like 25 questions, maybe 30. Funding, and then voting information.
Oh, and the senior tax freeze.
And those are the seven, six tabs.
Thank you. And questions should be directed to you, Matt?
Uh, referendum questions or webpage questions? Krista has really worked, Krista Gallion's worked very hard on helping with our consultants to, you know, fine tune. It's a fine line between having too much information, having enough, being able to find it. But we, you know, our community likes to have a lot of information, so we feel that's important to have. Although it's not the easiest necessarily, it's, Krista's worked hard to help streamline the information here, so.
Thank you.
And questions on the referendum can go directly to me. We also have a link for anybody, and we do answer the questions. And actually, the frequently asked questions page is live. So we are continually revising and updating as we get more questions. So we are always happy to talk about the referendum and always happy to answer questions. And again, the vote is Tuesday, January 28th. Most community members should be receiving mail-in ballots, those who do mail in sometime this week. And so we encourage you to look at our website or reach out to us or attend a forum to learn more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's a link under the FAQs for the email, vote2025@princetonk12.org.
Thank you. And we really appreciate all your work on it, nights, weekends, holidays. We appreciate it. We'll try to get the board not to bother you over Christmas. Wait till the 26th if you need anything. Okay. All right, now, did you have anything else?
No.
No, great, okay. So we're moving on now to our student board members' report.
Lovely. Well, we, that's loud, isn't it? It's kind of nice. It's a lot of power. Two times ago, we spoke for like 30 minutes, and the last time, we weren't here. So this time, we have the perfect in-between. We're going to keep it nice and short for y'all. But there were two things we wanted to talk about. The one I was really interested in is this AI plan I know y'all have been working on. I was just kind of curious to ask where, in your eyes, we should be with it in the schools right now? Because I've seen a few teachers have kind of tested it out. Like, we had a Thanksgiving activity where it was like, oh, go tell school AI how you're going to hide the turkey. And then, but you know, we're not, it's not integrated into the classrooms yet. And for assignments, we don't yet have clear guidelines as to how much AI is allowed. So I was just wondering where that should be.
I can help answer that. So the guidelines are done, and so they should be shared in like syllabi and things like that. So that's really good feedback for someone like me to work with our supervisors. And I can follow up with them tomorrow, saying after winter break, let's make sure that we're all on the same page. Because on the website, which is now down, we have an AI section. And there's a, like a scale from zero to five of like how much AI can be used, where you can like use it for brainstorming versus using it for like a full draft and then getting revision. So kind of just saying to students, hey, we're doing this assignment on a three. Like, you can use this for AI, you cannot use this for AI. So that should be clear. For teachers, we just got the platform up and running in early November and had PD about it. So it's a little slow to start. So we're going to do another PD in January, then offering a lot of different AI sessions of how they can use school AI. And then we are also going to be piloting ChatGPT-0, which is an AI detection tool. Yeah, 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 yeah. But kids can use it too, to like improve their writing and their feedback. So we have 38 staff members sign up for it at the high school. So that will be coming in January as well. We're going to be piloting that.
That's good.
For this student, would that be something that's shared with the students at large, or would it just be like on the website?
For what was it?
Like, will that be something that's set in classrooms, or is it just something that's found on the website?
The, the scale?
Yes.
It should be shared with students. So that's something that, when we can meet with teachers again right after the break, we can make sure at every department meeting that we're reiterating that, and that that's the expectation. I think some, and I don't mean this in a snide way, I think some teachers are denial that AI is here.
Right, right.
And that it's not being used. So we want to be clear with our expectations, for sure.
That's great. And then, in general, I think this is, I guess, more school-specific, but we've still kind of been talking about the idea of some sort of academic integrity council, how that would work. And I've been thinking a lot about, like, if you, because one way to look at it is you could kind of focus on enforcement. And, but the problem with that is if you have like students deciding the fates of other students, that's not going to go well. And as well, I think that because it's become such a problem at our school, if you start raining down zeros on everyone doing it, it's going to be a very noticeable effect. And so I'm trying to just keep thinking of ways that we can really engrain the values more than, and of course, like values correspond to practice. But I think the more that we can get these values out, and like you said, make sure teachers are sharing them. Like even, even just on the bottom of a test, having people sign their names, say yes, like, once again, I'm going to this honor code. I think that always makes a difference. So I'm just going to put that out there.
Yeah, we love that. Ms. Burge is your. Is your admin?
Yes.
To speak with on that. You know, the board supports that, something we've been talking about for years, is academic integrity. We know it needs to be improved.
Yeah.
But Ms. Burge is your contact.
I actually had a really great conversation with Ms. Burge yesterday about this. And one thing that I brought up that we might consider as part of this council is possibly having students and teachers working together on like specifying or making a more detailed outline of parts of the honor code that are a little more vague. So like skipping on the day of the test, like how many skips results in like an honor code violation? Or like giving answers to friends, like how you can enforce that? Or defining like exactly, like the scale, like how much AI uses too much? So like possibly having students have a bigger involvement in that could lead to, like just a general larger awareness of, just like having academic integrity.
How do you think that's going to be received by the students?
I'm hoping it will be positive eventually.
I think, I think right now, I think a lot of kids are very dismissive about it. Because they've just seen, like so many of them are cheating, that there are like new regulations, like, what does it matter? Because we've had regulations in the past, and so new ones. And so I think it is again about really putting those values into the students. Maybe it helps to focus on the people who are just coming into the high school, who haven't been indoctrinated yet.
I think also for academic integrity, like at least what I've noticed is that it's, like, I don't think anyone feels good about cheating. I think it's, I think it's not like an inherently positive thing to do. So I think really like making it a priority for teachers to like reach out and have that like communication and be able to say like, okay, if you need help, like you have, I have office hours, you can come reach out to me. Like, instead of feeling, like, I think like we have a very high standard of achievement at Princeton High School. And I think maybe having like that understanding that instead of cheating, there are other places, the other ways that you can kind of help when you're feeling a little bit like stuck. I think that might be something that we get off about. Yeah. And then our second thing was, so we mentioned in our last report how students might want to speak up a little more about anything that they might find important at school. So our last student council meeting, we actually had Ms. Burge come to our meeting. And we also had students who felt, who wanted to. I think student councils meetings have always been open. They just haven't been very like clearly broadcasted to the student body. So we did start doing that. We had our first student show up. We had one. Yes, we did, we did have one person, I think. So that was very, very exciting for us. We thought it was a huge success.
It's an ongoing process trying to get people who aren't in student council involved. Because this week, we've had Spirit Week, where each day you do something different. Today was anything but a backpack day. And it was just the student council walking around with like shopping carts and everything. So I think still, we're looking for better ways to communicate to the student body at large, because everyone's getting so much information, because our school system, like so much great things are happening. But it's difficult for students to keep track and stay involved in all of it.
Yeah, but even so, like, I think student council has some really great input about the bell schedule, which is what we specifically focused on. Like, they appreciated the consistency and like the same weekly schedule. And I think we thought it was super important for science classes, having that 90-minute block for labs. But they did mention that sometimes those block days were not split up super efficiently in some, in some classes. And so they proposed adding like a little more of an outline or structured time to classes of English, like breaking it down with worksheets, reading, writing time, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we really, I just want to say, I really reflect on things you say. And I'm just so pleased that, you know, just to hear how, how much you're leading, especially when we talked about the cell phones and that you have a flip phone, Nicola. Like, I'm your biggest fan, just so you know. And Maya, how you put your, your phone away. You're leaders, and so. The evil one. I don't even, I don't even know where you get like a flip phone, but. Are they? Yeah. But we really appreciate your sharing, you know, your concerns with us and things that you want to do. And I look forward to seeing what you do for the rest of the year. So thank you. And you're welcome to stay for cake. I know it's a busy time of year, so.
And thank you for the time that you spend. We really appreciate it.
All right. All right, now, moving on to our public, first public comment on agenda items, non-agenda items. If you would like to speak to public comment, just come up to the podium, just state your name, the street you live on. And if you could please keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. I don't know, is it on? Yep, it's on. Okay.
Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay. So I'm Karen O'Connell. I live on Hibben Road. And I'm here tonight to ask the school board to take note of the town's continual passing of ordinances that create pilots, the payments in lieu of taxes for new residential developments. The next vote for an estimated $40 million payment reduction is scheduled to be voted on this Thursday. Unlike property taxes, pilots approved for developments do not have tax dollars earmarked for schools. They generally last for decades on a reduced payment schedule. On December 19th, Princeton Council is planning to adopt a pilot for the property at 108 Stockton. If passed, it will allow the payments to flow to the municipality. If history repeats, no payments will go to the schools. This is a particularly terrible time for the town to be adopting pilots. Our school system desperately needs investment, and residents are currently being asked to pass an $89 million referendum in support. Having council approve pilots while schools are in need creates a mixed, distressing message. The developer will get a significant tax break, and none of his reduced payments would by law go to funding the schools. At the same time, the developer is adding to the cost burdens of the school system. Taxpayers are left to pay higher taxes to make up the difference. Pilots are intended to encourage new development. Pilots are intended to encourage new development in underserved communities. No one believes that Princeton meets that criterion, so approving pilots here makes no sense for our town. I have eight reasons. Do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, so there are eight reasons for the school board to ask council to stop creating these payments in lieu of taxes and to ask them to vote no next Thursday, this Thursday. One, loss of critical school funding. A significant portion of property taxes goes to public schools. A pilot agreement diverts those funds directly to the municipality. This leads to number two, increased financial burden on taxpayers. With schools not receiving funds from pilots, from the pilot agreement, the shortfall has to be made up by homeowners and other property owners. This creates an unfair financial burden on residents who already are paying high taxes. Three, impact on educational quality. Reduced funding limits a school's district's ability to provide adequate resources, technology, and extracurricular programs. It can also impact class sizes, special education, and after-school opportunities directly affecting student outcomes. Four, disproportionate impact on children and families. A pilot agreement that neglects schools harms families and the children the most. It prioritizes short-term municipal gains over long-term development of the community's future workforce and citizens. Five, strain on growing school enrollment. New developments often attract new families to the area, increasing student enrollment in in local schools. A pilot agreement does not provide funding to support the growing number of students. This can further create overcrowding and under-resourced classrooms. Six, lack of transparency and accountability. Pilot agreements can lack transparency, making it difficult to assess whether the financial benefits to the municipality outweigh the cost to schools and taxpayers. Seven, equity concerns. Diverting funds away from public schools may disproportionately impact lower-income families and underprivileged students in our community. Eight, this is my last one. Undermining community priorities. A thriving school system benefits the entire community. Home values are higher, businesses attract employees, and families are drawn to the area. Weakening schools through a lack of funding damages the long-term reputation and desirability of the community. So Princeton Council seems to have an unending appetite for these pilots. While the municipality itself may benefit from the short term from the pilot agreement, the long-term consequences on schools, children, and taxpayers can be significant. Please get involved before it's too late.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Daphne, I got the red sweater memo. I feel like a skunk at a garden party. You're having such a lovely meeting, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing board members, outgoing, exiting board members. What did you say? Escaping. Okay. Joe Butler, eighteen Hibben Road.
We're not coming over.
Hibben Road. Secret. Okay, thank you. I also am here to speak about the pilot agreement introduced by council with the developer of the seminary properties. Pilots were never intended for use in a town like Princeton and certainly not for premier properties. They were conceived for and make a lot of sense for true urban areas with abandoned factories and warehouses and brownfields. The law was meant to concentrate public investment into stressed urban centers to assist in the rehabilitation of the older municipalities of the state. The fact that Herring Properties had to create an LLC called an Urban Renewal Entity in order to qualify to receive the pilot tells you everything you need to know. We have known for two years that the developer would be receiving a pilot. We just didn't know how bad it would be. We also didn't anticipate that we would, that the announcement about the pilot would coincide with the district's referendum. In the interest of transparency, in addition to being an educational consultant, I'm also the president of Princeton Coalition for Responsible Development. PCRD is legally challenging the redevelopment ordinance associated with this project. We are also legally challenging the master plan. As you recall, public discussions were cut short in order to pass this urgently needed master plan. As far as I can tell, the only urgency was around paving the way for this project. I know the school board had concerns about the master plan and the master plan process, but I understand why you might have decided to keep your powder dry. But I don't know how you now go to the community to ask us to support a ninety million dollars, eighty nine million dollar referendum without taking a stand on the pilots. The town is not going to quit using this mechanism if people don't stand up and call it out for what it is. They claim that this property would not be developed if it were not for this giveaway. Does anyone really believe that? It might not be developed exactly like they want it, but that's not the standard. Where might else we see a pilot? Westminster Choir College, the Textile Research Institute. They're not going to go away. And why do I think you ought to take some stand, either public and or legal? First and foremost, it's an equity issue. Our schools are one of the most important reasons people want to live here. And they are why Princeton is a good, stable investment for developers. How can a developer contribute nothing? The school board has done a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous job on the referendum. I applaud all that you've done and I support it. But I fear the schools will need an ever-increasing amount of money to operate, partly due to increased enrollment, and the public is going to get tapped out and angry. People don't understand the details. They only know that the schools will be be taking an ever-increasing share percentage of their taxes, in part because the town is taking a windfall. I think that by not speaking up now, you are making it more difficult for yourselves in the future and more difficult for future school boards. They aren't going to quit. When is enough enough? Pilots are hard to explain, especially hard when you're up against a disinformation campaign. Think about how hard it will be the next time a pilot's introduced. And then layer on top of that, an explanation about why you didn't say something for the three or four previous pilots. People in council keep dropping hints that there will will be or that there is money here for the schools. Setting aside that this is a terrible way to govern, to have the schools beholden to the town for a handout, it also seems that it isn't true. You have nothing to lose and a lot to gain by pushing back. Someone has to stand up for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else for a public comment? All right, so I have an email to read. They sent it to the wrong, let's see if I can get through it. So it's from Jessica Vieira, and it's to Betsy and Brian. Betsy and Brian, I was trying to make it to the meeting tonight, but parental duties prevented my attendance. Please know that I am eternally grateful for your work and diligence during your tenure on the Board of Education. And there's bolded areas I'll try to emphasize. Public service roles such as yours require unrequited dedication. The long hours and often empty meetings can be depressing. On the flip side, controversial issues and challenging personalities tested your patience. Regardless, your constant focus on the prize, the objective of making our school system a better place for our kids, has made a huge difference in our community. I'm not sure what I would do without Betsy's emails, which often would remind me that we had an upcoming PTO meeting. Perhaps instead she will text Sue and me to grab a coffee. Brian, I hope you're ready to make some real changes in town in your next role. As a somewhat active member of our community at large, I hope you are all ears. And then this is in bold capitalized, listen and, and then it's lowercase capital, lowercase bold, thoughtfully consider the opinions of your constituents. I'm sure you will. Your track record in this BOE role has demonstrated unbiased professionalism. Let us all remember, and then it's bold cap, keep the kids as our top priority. And then regular case, and we will be all right. Thanks again from all of us. Jessica Vieira, Stockton Street.
Thanks, Jessica.
All right, we're moving on. J one, harassment and nation bullying. And then K one, board committee highlights, and we're going to start. Let's go first. Brian, why don't you go first?
Sure. The Operations Committee met on December fourth from eight to nine thirty. We had a great meeting. And as usual, Matt and Janine took lengthy notes, which I will try to briefly summarize. On the agenda tonight, or no, not on the agenda tonight, but as part of the two thousand twenty-two referendum, we are awarding a bid of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. It is on the agenda. This is important to get the heating and cooling systems to work in harmony at Princeton Middle School. And by moving forward with this, we'll also save energy costs and be more sustainable. The highlight of the two thousand twenty-three referendum, I'd call to everybody's attention, is the PHS cafeteria project. And if you haven't had a chance to spend some time there, please make that time. It really worked out wonderfully, and we're grateful to our architect and to the contractor for delivering that. One thing that is not completed is the PHS security vestibule project. The vestibules are in place. We have had a supply chain problem with the glass. So the glass that needs to be installed in the doors will not be received until February, and it was not possible to change vendors. So I just call that to everybody's attention is one thing that we're still waiting on. Also, on the agenda for tonight is approval of bus video cameras. This is an important step forward with respect to our focus on security. Most importantly, we got an update on the budgets for the twenty-two and twenty-three referendum. And we are on or below budget for both of them and are grateful to Matt and to Dave and our professionals for such hard work. We heard an update on playground projects, which are moving forward. And we talked a lot about sustainability. And rather than tell you everything about sustainability, I just want to remind everyone that that's a regular topic that we have on our agenda. And it is in part due to Stephanie Chorney's advocacy many years ago. And we have a great partnership with Sustainable Princeton. And there's a lot going on, and I'll ask Janine to send out the notes so that you can see those. We even got to talk more about solar projects for the roofs, which will be coming, I don't know how soon, but they are definitely coming, you know, to to our district. And I, oh, the most exciting part in closed session. I'm sorry, I almost forgot this. Matt reviewed the draft copy of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four unaudited C one form with the committee. And that was. Oh, it's really special time. Riveting. So that concludes my final Operations Committee.
You said it was going to be brief.
Everyone makes fun of accountants. I don't know why.
So we're going to switch it around. So next up is Betsy. Betsy's always last.
Okay, well, it's usually alphabetical order.
I know.
Student Achievement. And first of all, it's been a great pleasure and a joy to run Student Achievement for many years. That is the heart of, I mean, all the committees are very special and important, but it is the heart.
Except facilities. Sorry.
So we met on this Friday, the thirteenth, in person. We had a wonderful in-person meeting at eleven AM. We reviewed, John McMichael came from the high school with Cecilia Burge to review the the program of studies for twenty-five, twenty-six. It's hard to believe we're talking about twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And that will be published for students soon. Mickey Chrisa fully attended Student Achievement to give us a programming update regarding outcomes from the Special Education Review. And we wish Mickey all the very best in her retirement. I know that's upcoming, but we appreciate her partnership. Kim Tu shared with us plans for the December twenty-third early dismissal day. See, I'm talking about the school calendar, which will come up on my on my bingo board. And it is a four-hour day. It is a Monday. We want, we want everyone in school because we have some wonderful things planned. Not we, our schools have wonderful things planned for them. And we thank our our teachers and our staff for preparing those.
Can I just say, if you want to acknowledge and respect Betsy's service, please send your kids to school on Monday.
That includes Charlie Baglio, who may be listening at home. And then finally, we, Priscilla Russell attended, and we have an Italy field trip for the Italian students for next November. That's on our agenda this evening, and we adjourned to closed session. I just want to thank my committee this year, Eleanor, Debbie, Susan, and Daphna. It was a wonderful year, and it's a wonderful committee, so check it out in the new year.
Thank you. Next up, let's do personnel.
Sorry. The Personnel Committee met on December fifth. We discussed tenure and non-tenure reviews at all six schools and many other personnel items. And Mara and I would like to thank our committee, Daphna, Betsy, and Brian, and our substitute, Susan. And we will miss both Betsy and Brian and their input to the Personnel Committee for these past several years. So thank you.
Thank you. Policy. Beth?
I would like to thank the Policy Committee. We did not have a meeting this month, so I have nothing to report. But I want to thank my committee members. It's Adam and Eleanor and Susan and myself and who else? Oh, and Betsy, thank you, Betsy. Unless I forget Betsy.
Oh, right. And then you have a long-term planning report.
And I have a long-term planning report, so.
So you want to wrap that up and then?
Yeah, so thank you, Policy, and no report and long-term planning. We met today. We're continuing to talk about educating voters on the January twenty-eighth referendum, which is the result of years of planning, as we all know. And we want to ensure that people understand where they can get information, which we talked about this evening. And the projects, remind people that the projects utilize nearly twenty million dollars in state funding to solve the capacity challenges of community growth and also replace end-of-life HVAC at PHS, which will save us approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year in the operating budget. And we encourage the public to inform themselves and review the district website and to attend the January eleventh, nine AM in-person forum at the PMS auditorium. That's the next in-person event, but we have things going on all through the next weeks. Thank you. And thanks to that committee. That would be Brian, Susan, Mara, Debbie, myself, and our guest appearances by Daphna, Betsy, and Eleanor. So thank you, everyone.
Just about everyone.
Just about everyone.
Yep, except Cranberry.
Those deserve it.
All right, moving on, L one, policies for a second reading. Then moving on to personnel, M one, retirement. I just want to say Teresa Cross has submitted her retirement. It's effective July one, twenty twenty-six. She's a planner. And we appreciate, she will have completed in a year and a half, twenty-nine years in the district. Teresa is one of those consummate educators. We're my, both my children were at Littlebrook, where she's the Educational Media Specialist. We wish you all the best. Teresa will have a long time to say goodbye, which we'd love to do. All right, moving on, M two, resignations, M three, appointments, M four, transfer reassignment, M five, personnel items, M six, leave of leave of absence, M seven, substitute student placement, M eight, curriculum instruction, and nine, student services. Then we're moving on to N one, the PHS program of studies. And this should be on the website, right, at some point? Once it's approved, once it's approved, it's great reading. I think it's like a hundred and twenty-eight pages. But it just showcases all of the offerings at Princeton High School, which are very impressive. And two, is student overnight trips. Moving on to O one, Special Education Agreement. O two, Educational Placement of Pupils, twenty-four, twenty-five. And O three, Educational Placement of Pupil at Princeton Public School, twenty-four, twenty-five. Moving on to the business, P one, Financial Report, P two, Fire Evacuation Drill, P three, Registration Travel Agenda. P four, Settlement Agreement, P five, Formal Bit Award, Perimeter Heating Controls at PMS that Mr. McDonald was very excitedly reporting about. P six, Sprinkler Installation Contract Award Cooperative Purchasing. And then we have P seven, which is the Bus Video Camera Award that Mr. McDonald mentioned. And now we're moving on to our second public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No one. All right, so now we're going to move on to the R one, Approve the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion? Susan, second. Beth?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cant?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes.
All right, thank you.
Betsy, before I close it up.
Sure, closing comments of the board. I have one really quick comment. I I forgot to thank the Superintendent Search Committee by name, Rob, Mara, Eleanor, and Daphna. You put in a great amount of hours, and it's a tribute, well, it's a service to the community and to the board. And I was really appreciative to work with all of you. And also in my comments, I just really wanted to say to the staff who work with our students, we appreciate you. And I appreciate you, and I've appreciated doing this work for nine years, knowing you're there with the students. So I appreciate that.
What do you appreciate, Beth?
Their care. I'm sorry, I have to be specific.
Yes, no, because I I need Betsy to cry more than I do.
No, no, no. What do you care? They take great care of our students and every. They take great care of our students at every, at every role in our district. And and we know that you are the heart of what we do, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. And again, congratulations, very best wishes to Rob, Brian, and Betsy. We will miss you. Please don't come here and like go to some audience like we know. But we'll miss you. I'm sure we'll seek your guidance. I just wanted to say before we adjourn, I wanted to wish, this is the darkest, literally the darkest time of the year. And as you celebrate your festivals of light, whether it's Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Christmas, and Dwali was just celebrated, we wish you a very peaceful and joyous break. And thank you for entrusting us with educating your children. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Closed session.
Oh, we're going into closed session, but after cake, right? Okay, can I get a motion? Yeah, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I don't have a cake resolution.
Betsy, second. Susan?
Resolve that Board of Education approve the closed session resolution, whereas NJSA 10412 allows for a public body to go into closed session during public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education, the Princeton Public Schools has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas amendments to the closed session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA 10412 no longer applies. And the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools will go into closed session after cake and will adjourn from there for the following reasons to discuss personnel matters. There will be no action taken.
None. And I apologize that you felt you had to speed read through that.
No, it's all good.
Okay. All right.
I want to be the guy who reads the legal ads on TV. The legal disclaimer.
Oh, yeah, very good, very good. You have a good voice. All right, and so do we need to vote on that, or what are we doing here?
No, 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 that's just part of it.
That's it, we're going to closed session, that's it? We're done. Thank you. Thank you.